Okay. Good evening, and welcome to our Monday, October seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two, voting meeting of Exeter Township Board of School Directors. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. Mr. Feig, can you please take your call?
Dr. Anne Herring.
Present.
John Fidler.
Here.
Dr. Andrew Battler.
Here.
Dr. David Hemberger.
Here.
Jason Mel.
Here.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Robert Quinter. Julia Schaefer.
Here.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the nine board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the board table by our Solicitor Sharon Montane and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Christie Haller, Superintendent, Mrs. Dawn Harris, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Eric Flam, Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Diana Scornabaki, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator, as well as our Board Secretary. We can begin with the presentation.
So I'm very excited and grateful to welcome the members of the Food Pantry here with us this evening. Last, I believe it was last year, the Food Pantry was invited to come, move their organization to the Loush Building, to the Administration Building, where we felt they would be able to better serve the needs of our community. And so this evening, we have Mr. Jack Williams that is going to be giving a presentation to the board and has something that he would like to give all of you in gratitude.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for hosting us tonight. We'd like to, we'd like to give you a sort of appreciation to the board. I represent the Exeter Food Pantry, the members who are steering and leadership committee of your city here on the front of the world. We started serving the community well over twelve years ago, when we recognized the food and securities of our neighbors, and when I said sixty-five, and that the resources that we had, that if we could help, we should help. And we've been serving for twelve years. On an average gift, we serve over two hundred of your neighbors, either your families, of two hundred average family gift, over seventy-five, eighty of those families are families of children. It also makes up a very high percentage of the elderly and also many with disabilities that limit their ability. So it's just something that we have on our hearts to serve and continue to serve. Over a year ago, the partnership with the school district welcomed us and opened up the building. They've been absolutely fantastic to work with and provided us a home to be able to welcome them on Thursday, Friday of every month. We have over, well over a hundred volunteers coming from every segment of the Exeter Board of Community. It's not just one faith group, it's just not one social group, it's just not one Lions Club or Rotary Club, it's from everywhere. The school district over the years has been very, very instrumental in helping us. They do food drives, some of the clubs do drives, the elementary schools have done drives, and recently, a lot of the sports teams have been coming after school, after hours, to help out our four o'clock, six o'clock evening to participate in the volunteers. We're still very thankful and grateful for that. This is just a small plaque. It represents a very, very small token of our appreciation. We're so thankful for the partnership and the welcoming of our school district, and we hope to continue this for the year.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for coming out tonight and sharing that information with us. How can someone in the community, people in the community, help to donate to that? Can they bring things here? Is there any time specific?
You can, we have a Facebook page, so they can reach out to the E A F D Facebook page if they're interested in volunteering, if they're interested in donating food, if it's monetary donations, they want to come and come and help. We'll be set up on a Thursday, so there's people that can come on Thursday morning to set up, or then Friday afternoons will go up those evenings to help them distribute the food. But if they just reach out to us on our Facebook page, we'll connect them with another community.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Dr. Herring, also, just a reminder to everyone out there that November's right around the corner, and I've participated in scouting for food. I think this is my fifteenth year with my family, and it's a great time. If you're looking for a way to donate, the kids are going to be dropping off flyers in front of your houses in the first week of November, and you can just leave it on the door, and they'd be happy to pick it up for you guys the following Saturday. So another great way to contribute.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, and thank you for being here tonight. I don't know if you want to stay for the whole thing, but you're welcome to. I'm sorry, Bob, that was your line, right? All right. We will not be amending the agenda tonight, so we'll move on to the Superintendent Report. Dr. Hallen.
Thank you, Dr. Herring, and it's very nice to see Lorraine in the house tonight. So wakomala, Lorraine faces. I'm sure they would like to probably leave right now, too, but you got to stay a little bit longer.
You're staying.
You're staying. I also like to make mention for public record that Brian Feig is truly committed to the Exeter Township School District. He had a shirt embroidered with the Exeter Eagle. You, too, can also get one of these shirts if you contact Brian Feig. So nicely done.
We make a commission.
So I'm very excited to report to you that last week, we had our first of three in-service days in the school district. We are using that time to begin training our staff on trauma and foreign practices. This training is being delivered by two of our own school district employees, Alicia Lenhart, our Student Services Coordinator, and Ashley Reinhardt, who serves as our school's social worker. We also spent a good portion of the day looking at our student data and developing plans to help us identify gaps. Part of that plan was to look at the resources that we currently have and to align those resources with the areas that we see are our biggest needs. Part of that planning was looking at actually changing the sequencing and the way things are taught, as well as looking to adding additional resources that we would be using S R three funds, some of the remaining portion of the S R three funds to support. In November, we will be continuing this work, and we will be doing an additional training for staff that will actually be focusing on drug awareness. So our staff has an idea of some of the things that are out there, not just in the Exeter community, but all over as far as the type of edibles that could be coming into the community, and hopefully not, but possibly coming into the schools. So that is my board report for this evening, and again, very excited to see our Lorraine staff here with us today.
Thank you, Dr. Haller, and also thank you for inviting us to the in-service days. That means a lot. And I also speak to the board to say it's nice to also get the information, the outcome of it, and the information you're getting from everyone there. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Well, we would now move to public comment, but there's no one signed up for that. So we'll move on to minutes. If there is no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve meeting minutes from last month's school board meeting, September seventh, special voting meeting, and Board Committee of the Whole Meeting, as well as September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two board voting meeting. Hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. Okay. There are no objections. We'll adopt a motion to approve the August two thousand and twenty-two treasurer's report and payment request dated September twenty, two thousand and twenty-two to October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Hearing no objections, the treasurer's report. I think you said August, it's September. Sorry. Oh, I meant to say September twenty. Did I say August? Oh, I don't know where that came from. Thank you. Okay, the treasurer's report is approved. Onto committees. Education Committee, Mr. Fidler.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. The first item does not require a vote. It's the monthly enrollment report. I do have a question for, I guess, Dr. Haller. I see that there are, I believe the number is eighty-three students being homeschooled, and I'm just curious to know how that compares with the last few years, going back, say, before the pandemic? What kind of trends are we seeing, consistency?
So that number eighty-three is higher than pre-pandemic numbers, but it's lower than what we've seen over the last few years throughout the pandemic. That number was well over a hundred at one point. It skyrocketed during the pandemic, you know, around a lot of things related to a lot of the, you know, CDC guidance and policies and things like that that were in relation to COVID. So we're back on a downward trend a little bit, but it's still high in comparison to previous years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. The next item, field trips within the sixty-mile radius. Also, no board action required. The trips are there for your carusal. And there are two trips that do require board action. Junior high school, eighth grade music class, traveling to Harrisburg, to the state capitol, to perform as part of the Music in the Schools Month on March seventh, and the senior high wrestling team, traveling to the William Penn Howdy Classic two thousand and twenty-two tournament at William Penn High School in Newcastle, Delaware in December. So it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following field trips, those two beyond sixty-mile radius.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And finally, we have the Education Committee consent agenda with several contracts and agreements. Those were all reported and discussed at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, and a list of conferences. Any conferences on the list that are in hold are new since the Committee of the Whole Meeting two weeks ago. So it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve all Education Committee items.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And that concludes the Education Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Personnel Committee, Mr. Morgan.
Okay. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. One, resignations under Certified Staff A, Support Staff A, Food Service Staff A. That's it for this one.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Number two, retirements, A.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to just offer my congrats to Ms. Fleming for seventeen years of service and wish her well in her upcoming retirement.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Number three, appointments, Certified Staff A through D, extracurricular Staff A through C, Certified Substitutes A through C, Guest Teachers A through H.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I will have to be abstaining from this as under Guest Teachers. Chauncey Watts is my daughter. I will be abstaining.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Motion carries.
Okay. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Number four, change of status, under Administrative Staff A, Support Staff A through H, Leaves of Absence A and B. And then we can also add to that number six, the job description. Actually, no, I'm sorry. I'm not going to do that. We're just going to do number five. Number four, number five.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves the updated attached job description for the Supervisor of Transportation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Number seven, it is recommended the Board of School Directors approve the creation of the following position, A, Cyber School Facilitator.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Number eight, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve or the change of rate for the general cafeteria substitutes from ten dollars and fifty cents an hour to fourteen dollars an hour.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Number nine, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves two summer days at a per day rate of two hundred and eighty dollars and twenty cents per day for Alyssa Robb.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Dr. Hallen, could you just let us know what the two summer days, what we do there? Just so we can get there.
Sure. Alyssa was hired last year after the start of the school year, so she missed the induction days that she was needing to attend to get, eventually get her Level Two certification. And so when the school year started this year, we also needed her to be part of other training, but needed her to also participate in the induction time that she missed. So that's a compensating her for that time.
You're stood. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And number ten, it is recommended the Board of School Directors approve the attached list of winter coaches for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Finance Facilities and Audit Committee, Mr. Mel.
Yes, starting off with item A, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a contract attached with Greenworks Development to install a solar farm on the grounds of the Exeter Township School District.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mic still. It went off again, Bob.
I would be voting against this for the following reasons. When it's still the least expensive area to build any construction required in the future, building in Loush or Lorraine would require demolition or extensive site preparation. Exeter had forty-seven homes sold in September and three hundred and eighty in the last year, indicating some growth. They were primarily in the three-plus-bedroom homes, with our schools at ninety percent utilization. Electromagnetic field caused by these solar farms, primarily the inverters, is known to cause illness and symptoms in a small percentage of people. I don't know what percentage of those students will be particularly sensitive to electromagnetic radiation. The National Cancer Institute, or which I have a copy of here, states that while some studies indicate a relationship between electromagnetic fields and leukemia and brain cancer in children, no definitive relationship has been determined, but studies are continuing. I don't take chances with this. The current efficiency of solar panels is approximately twenty percent. One of our fellow members sent me an article that showed that a lab had produced one that gave forty-seven percent efficiency, with more improvements envisioned by two thousand and thirty due to a government program, which I have a copy of here. With that program and the advancement, the costs expect to continue to drop. And actually, by the time we are in a position to purchase the field, it may be obsolete due to the low efficiency of the current panels being used. I don't like the idea of placing our children in an industrial area with environmental studies still out and being conducted. When you look at the chart of where the solar field will be around a Watten, it is totally surrounded, and we might as well put it down. In fact, we'd be better off putting it down in the, one of the industrial areas, because there's no 辐射 radiation there. I take exception with the position of the developers that, and with our business manager, that energy prices will continue to rise. The energy prices have seen a significant upturn in the last two years, primarily due to national policies. I envision those national policies will be reversed should the current regime be replaced by another individual. So my reasons for voting yes.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Dr. Herring?
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Herring. Yeah, I guess my, I'm trying to get a handle on this, and I apologize for not being at the Committee of the Whole. I was on vacation that week. You know, my understanding when we went into, when we started talking about the proposal, that some of the big issues really had to do with the placement of the panels, the location of the panels. It seemed as if, you know, we had considerable discussion about that. It sort of held up the project for a period of time because folks were uncomfortable. It seemed like there was a consensus, or at least a growing consensus among the majority of the board, that, you know, the location over at a Watten would be the preferred site for a hundred percent of the project. Now I kind of get the sense that there's some questions or skepticism regarding the project because of some of the parts of the proposal that suggest that there is a thirty million dollar gain over the period of forty years, which would not likely pan out. I understand some folks have done some analysis or had looked at it in a different manner, and are concluding that those, that information is not likely, or that those outcomes are not likely to occur. So I guess my, you know, my question is, you know, how do we account for a situation where we are initially proposing or considering a thirty million dollar benefit over forty years to the point where we feel like we're going to be, we may be taking a loss? And for those who are kind of skeptical of those numbers, how do we, how do we gain some confidence that those numbers may be, are correct or not correct? I mean, I appreciate the work folks have done on the board, you know, to investigate this. It's a complicated process. There's a lot of variables. There are certainly a lot of estimates that are included in the proposal. But how do we, as a board, gain enough confidence to make a decision? So I don't know whether, I know we have folks from Greenworks here. I don't know if there's been any, any additional analysis that's provided to the board based upon some of the remaining questions, or whether, you know, whether there are other members of the board who'd like to speak to, you know, their concerns about what they believe is maybe not an outcome, not a profit outcome that we would expect. I know our business office and our superintendent, from what I understand, are hopeful that we move this forward because of the, you know, the pending, impending deficits that we expect for the budget. And I know that's, this is, and I think across the country, we're seeing more and more school districts are moving toward solar as a way to kind of hedge against, you know, those deficits and reduce energy costs. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, where the remaining skepticism may be and how we can continue to look at this in a positive light and move this forward as we, you know, as we continue to determine whether or not it's a viable project. Dr. Hemberger, I'll share a couple of things. I appreciate you saying that. And to be clear, you know, I am in favor of continuing to go down this road and look for options for solar. I don't think it's a bad option. And I do think, you know, we use the word profit outcome, we use the word savings. I consider this to be more stabilization. I think when we use the word profit outcome or savings, we're under the assumption that we're bringing money in, that it's a source of revenue. I don't see it like that. I do believe that it is a stabilization of our current electricity. And I understand that over the course of forty years, that that savings is going to be brought back.
And I understand that over the course of forty years, that that savings is going to be brought back to us based on where we could be paying from the utility company. But I do believe it's stabilization. My issue right now is that I don't believe that, quite honestly, that we've seen the partnership that I would like to see from Greenworks. And that's not to say that Greenworks isn't a great company to work with, I know that you've vetted them with other school districts, my understanding is that, you know, they seem to be extremely knowledgeable. However, we've spent several months now looking at this. You know, I look at the neck, this newest contract that's been brought to us. My understanding from the committee of the whole was that this would, we were actually looking at a hundred percent system as opposed to a hundred and ten percent system. I haven't seen our what DC solar energy system decrease at all. I haven't seen our buyout decrease at all. I haven't seen the pricing schedule decrease at all, yet we're saying that we're going to use, we're going to be having ten percent less of what was originally being offered. Furthermore, I know that we've tried, we've asked several questions about negotiating this contract without any counter. You know, whether they felt as though our price that we were asking for a percent decrease in the pricing schedule was higher or not. There was no counter to that, it was simply, this is what the price is. And I think lastly, at the committee of the whole, you know, it was brought to our attention that because of this lapse from when it was originally proposed, that they have more invested to do this, it's going to cost them more money. And they were going to provide us some information to, to show some background to that, and I did not receive anything over that time period. So for those reasons, I want to make it clear that I'm not against continuing this conversation. I do think that, you know, we're headed that way anyway. I do agree with, with Mr. Quinter that I, it's hard to predict that in the next forty years that the, there's not going to be ebbs and flows as opposed to just, just climbing the hill. But right now, I think I need to see more of a partnership with our district, and I just don't feel that we're seeing that with Greenworks.
Yeah, I just, I know we have the folks here this evening, I just wondered if there were anything that Mr. Morgan may have pointed out here that would be, that you would like to address, I mean, from Greenworks perspective? If you want to come up, Mr. Knight.
I do think there's a PowerPoint that I have queued in case you want, because there's questions on what was changed from committee of the whole to now, I'm not sure if we want to show that or not, or it's up to you.
That's great, if we can walk through the PowerPoint, I'm Doug Knight, I quickly love development again, good to see you. What I had done since our committee of the whole meeting a week and a half ago, I put together a really short slide deck that addressed the issues that came up during that meeting. Tim, I think it addresses some of the concerns that you just put on the table. I'd like to walk through that really quickly. So if you go to the next slide. This is where we left the last meeting, I had shown you four different options. It showed layouts that were in four different arrays across a couple of different sites, and this is what the board had decided was the preferred option of those four options during the last meeting. There were, there was a small issue associated with this option though, and that there was an intention to try to remove a couple of rows of the array in the upper left of that image. And so if you go to the next slide, and this was the five point one megawatt, one hundred percent option, like Tim mentioned a minute ago. The slide that you're looking at now shows the areas that I had received last week from Mr. Pike, which showed where the array location, or where the array rows were requested to be removed in the upper left there. And Brian, at the same time, in that same marked up slide that you see on the screen, showed us the two oval circled locations, which were additional locations where we could add additional panels in order to make up for the deletion of the rows that you see up in the upper left. But those areas that you see circled, those two oval areas that you see circled, gave us an opportunity to actually replace more capacity than just what we had eliminated in those couple of rows. So if you go to the next slide, what you'll see is those rows in the upper left that have been removed, but we've taken advantage of the additional area that was available to us in those two circled areas from the last slide. And that actually enabled us to get you back up to one hundred and ten percent offset of your current electricity use if the board chooses to do that. So, that is what we base the current contract on, is that hundred and ten percent offset that we were able to climb back to, given that additional area that was offered to us. And that's why the contract buyout number and the offset number were changed from the original one hundred and ten percent offset version of the contract that was provided before a month or two ago. So I want to make sure that everyone understands where we went with this. If you'd like to back that back to a hundred, a hundred percent, even though we had this space available to do what we did on the screen, we can absolutely do that. That would scale the numbers back of corresponding.
So a couple of things, it was not a month or two ago, it was seventeen days ago, this is dated September thirtieth, I believe today is October seventeenth. Second thing, you know, from my understanding, when we speak at a committee of the whole meeting and we make a decision in a committee of the whole meeting to move forward something to a vote, you know, that's, my expectation is that that's what I'm going to see, because that's the next time that we really have an opportunity to discuss this. You know, since, since we're not discussing it off. And so now, you know, I've done my research based on what we were told for the committee of the whole, and we're now being presented new information. Which, you know, the whole concept is that we have time to digest that, we can look at the agenda, you know, we can review the contracts. Again, I, you know, at this point, there's been too much back and forth, you know. You know, if you ask me, I'm not in favor of voting for this today, I would be in favor of forming some kind of a subcommittee and continuing to look at this at a greater capacity and look at Greenworks as well as some of their competitors. But at this time, I think we've done enough back and forth that, you know, this was not the proposal that was, that was given to us, you know, at the last meeting. Thank you.
I guess my, my question really is maybe, to Mr. Knight, you know, we've talked about some of the timeline issues associated with this, and I thought coming into this meeting that, you know, if we were to move forward, we would be within that timeline where some of the provisions of Inflation Reduction Act would not necessarily come into play, which my understanding has to do with prevailing wage, and in this particular project may have some cost implications, not only for this project, but any future projects we might decide to do. So, we're sort of in a unique window, I think, right now, from what I can see, am I stating that correctly, Mr. Knight? So we're sort of a unique position because the further we go down this rabbit hole, I think the, the, the less of a of a benefit we will find when we look at the ultimate cost. Projections of maybe twenty percent more in the overall cost of the, which I know you haven't really calculated that, but that was an estimate, I think, an estimate that you may have provided previously.
The estimate is about a ten percent increase in project cost if the prevailing wage requirement
No, ten percent.
Is required. The Inflation Reduction Act took the original twenty-six percent federal investment tax credit for solar, twenty-six percent of the value of the system, and it bumped it up to thirty percent from twenty-six percent with an additional requirement that any system that's over one megawatt DC in size, this is five point one or five point six, depending on what the board would decide, would require prevailing wage. The opportunity is that you can, at this point, if you were to move forward with a project, could take advantage of the thirty percent federal investment tax credit versus the twenty-six percent. And if you fall into a grace period window in the shorter term here, that's not completely defined yet, you could move forward without having to incur prevailing wage labor while still taking advantage of the thirty percent investment tax credit. There's a window there, it's not exactly clear when that window will close. There's an opportunity at this point, but that's not a reason to make a quick decision, we want to make sure that the board makes the right decision, an informed decision, not a quick decision.
The thirty percent tax credit, am I correct in saying that lasts until twenty thirty-two?
Twenty thirty-two, that's correct.
Twenty thirty-two?
Yeah.
I mentioned some figures on efficiency of the panels. Were they any approximately correct?
Well, they are correct, the question is what do those, I don't want to get too deep into the weeds here, but what do those forty percent plus efficient cells or panels entail? I've been involved for the last fifteen years with a professor up at Penn State University in Parkland, a nanotechnology solar cell developer project, trying to bring nanotechnology into the core of a cell. So I'm fairly deep in the physics on this sort of thing. My understanding is that a forty percent plus efficient cell would be what's called a multi-junction cell, where you stack a number of different cells on top of each other, each of which absorbs a certain bandwidth of light. So that as the light passes through different layers of a cell, each layer of which is absorbing its own bandwidth, you accumulate more efficiency than a single junction cell, which is what we're talking about here, which is all commercial production. That comes with its own cost, so you can produce a cell that's got a more efficient result. The question is cost, and cost per watt is the bottom line to solar. There are multi-junction cells already installed on the space shuttle, for instance, in area, in applications where you've got very, very, very limited room, and you need to get as much electricity output out of that very limited space as possible. That's where you use multi-junction cells for a number of years. It's a real question as to whether the cost per watt of a multi-junction cell is literally going to come down to the ground for these sorts of terrestrial operations. So, correct what we qualify as is the answer.
You are, you're absolutely correct in that the new cells, the new panels do involve a multi-level whatever they put in there.
Yep.
And, but when I look at the government program, they say that even with the enhancements to the panels, well, I guess the first panel was invented back in nineteen fifty or something like that.
Nineteen fifty-four was the first commission center.
And they have nothing, they have done nothing but get less expensive since then. And the government program here, which ends in twenty thirty, is pointed toward reducing the cost of the enhanced panels. Now, if we increase, increase the efficiency of our panel to forty-seven percent, which they say they, they think they can fine tune it to fifty percent, we could cut out half of those panels, correct?
At a cost, at a cost, there's the question.
At what cost? Neither you nor I know what that cost is, but the government says they're going to, heh. I'm from the US government, I'm here to assist you, they're going to increase the prices. So, that's in addition to my health concerns, which, when I deal with children, I always accept the worst possible thing. I question this planned obsolescence, basically, if in the next ten years they do increase it to fifty, fifty percent. Then we've got a twenty percent solar farm, which is obsolete. So, we're looking at a thirty, forty-year payout on what is, I made the comparison to someone, I think it was Mr. Pike, that it's like buying a Model A when you know that the crisis streamline is only five years away. So, is it wise for us to make the investment now? Or is it, would be, we be wiser to wait off a little bit while the whole system is developed a little further? Are we jumping into it? You know, we cut off all our petroleum, but we don't have any electric cars. And we don't have the capability of charging electric cars. Are we a little too ahead of the game? I'm not against solar, I'm not against saving money, or even stabilizing the money. But I am about spending the money wisely.
My analogy to respond to that is, is the computer analogy, that if you buy a computer when there's a next generation that's going to be way more capable, that's going to cut out to the market in the next year or so, you're going to be left out having bought the current level of technology, not the next. When it comes to these sorts of solar arrays, the advantage of a next generation technology may be that that amount of space decreases somewhat, but it's not going to offer you, other than a space saving, somewhat of a space savings, it's not going to offer you anything additionally in terms of being able to generate electricity more cost effectively. It will save you room on the ground, but it won't generate electricity any more cost effectively than that system will. And, so, and the cost of solar, when you look at the curve from nineteen seventy-five, when I got out of high school, coincidentally, till now, it was a hundred and one dollars a watt when I got out of high school, that's how old I am at this point. At this point in the game, that's the cost per watt of a panel. At this point in the game, we're buying panels for forty-three cents a watt. The cost curve of any new product when it's introduced starts real high and then it levels out and goes almost down to nothing, no decrease as you trail out with it. We're way out there on that trailing end of the curve at this point with this level of technology. So the advantage in waiting, in my mind, and I've looked at this pretty hard, is that you'd save some room on the ground, but you'd have given up all of the cost savings in the time that you delay. So solar makes cost sense to install now, especially in a rising conventional energy environment. And it won't make dramatically more cost sense, better cost sense, in the, in the nearer term unless a really revolutionary technology is developed. Is my honest answer to that.
And it's very good, Ian. Don't know if I agree, totally with it, but that's all right. And I got a job as a salesman for you if you ever need one.
Well, and I really am trying to give you the level best of my knowledge on the technology and the industry that I can. But I know that I'm not doing my job well standing here if I don't have you make a decision in an informed way that's the right decision for the board, and that's what I really am trying to do.
And there has never been any question in my mind of your truthfulness or sincerity. I appreciate that.
I did in the slide deck, if you, if I can take another, we have to devote our time, answer two of the other questions that had come up during our last meeting and then subsequent to the last meeting and some of the questions that had come through. We can go to the next slide. One of the questions that was asked by the board over the last week and a half since our last meeting was a question about historic Med Ed price to compare data. This is a timeline of Med Ed price to compare data from two thousand and eleven, I believe it is, to twenty twenty-two, so it's the last eleven years worth of data. And what you can see on that screen, on that upper chart, is the initial price of electricity that eleven years ago or so was up in the ten cent range almost per kilowatt hour. It wavered a little bit for the next couple of years, but then you can see over toward the right-hand side of that chart, the cost effect on electricity, Med Ed and other utilities of fracked gas. Fracked gas, when it first came out of the ground in Pennsylvania and you couldn't ship it anywhere else in the world, was a very inexpensive thing to burn to produce electricity. So the price decrease that you saw in that right-hand third, maybe half of the chart is the price that was in effect when, you know, very inexpensive gas was coming out of the ground that was not exportable outside of Pennsylvania because of technology limitations. One of the things that you're seeing on the very extreme right of that chart is the effect of being able to liquefy natural gas and ship that liquefied natural gas anywhere in the world. And in a lot of parts of the world, Europe very much included, the cost of gas is way more expensive than the cost of gas had been in Pennsylvania for the previous eight or ten years because of fracking. So you can sell gas in a liquefied form for four to five to six So you can sell gas in a liquefied form for four to five to six times as much in Europe, and that's before everything happened in Ukraine, unfortunately. You can sell that gas in a liquefied form for four, five, or six times as much in Europe as you can in Pennsylvania. And so there's a global impetus for extractors in Pennsylvania to liquefy that product and get it over to Europe, where the market will bear a ton more cost than it does here. That's what created some of that extreme spike that you see on the right-hand side. That's the effect, the global effect, and it's being exacerbated now by Russia cutting off its gas supply to Europe. European countries are right now pitting against each other for gas to make sure that they almost literally survive this winter, unfortunately. That's the kind of global effect that you're now seeing on gas prices, that is inevitably going to, I think personally, continue to affect electricity pricing in Pennsylvania. And that, that's, to me, the principal reason to develop your own generation system. Solar really is the only practical way that there is to bring electricity generation on-site at a district like Exeter, so that you, to modify what Tim said a little while ago, can control as a district your energy future. You can lock in your electricity rates for a forty-year period of time and not be subject to what's going to happen on the right-hand side of that curve if electricity pricing continues to climb at the almost hundred percent increase that it has over the last few years. So the lower line that I drew there, and I've labeled it, is the line from the actual analysis, the forty-year analysis that I gave you a little while ago, that shows the three-point-four cent average cost of solar-generated electricity, were the district to put up its own generating system, its own solar generating system. That three-point-four cent line is obviously well below anything that the conventional price-to-compare in MedEd territory had ever come close to over the last eleven years. That three-point-four cents obviously has a couple of variables to it. There's the variable of what's going to happen with SREC prices, those are those renewable energy certificate prices. But we've given you the Excel forty-year cash flow analysis. We've given you the cash flow analysis in its form, without SREC value, and still, regardless of whether SRECs go to zero immediately or not, we've tried to put a conservative estimate of those values in the forty-year analysis. They start at forty, which is where the market is now, they drop down to twenty-five, then they drop down, I think, to ten in your analysis. You can zero that, see that you're, zeroed SREC. The only other thing that that three-point-four cents really depends on is the interest rate that you're going to borrow money at, assuming you will borrow money to buy the system out. And what we've been talking about in these meetings is the fair market value, which leads me to the next slide if I can, the last slide I'll show you now, stepped off. There was a question that came back to us last week on fair market value, that that was not a determinant number, and that was of concern to the board. Without getting into all of the, I'm an engineer, not an accountant, without getting into all of the accounting, you know, on how you determine fair market value of a system like this, what I wanted to let you know on this slide is that fair market value of a system like this one, or of this system in year five, at the end of year five, will not be a value that's primarily dependent on electricity it's going to replace. It's a fair market value that will be primarily dependent on the value of the contract service payments that were built into the contract that we've shown you, or a given number in the contract that we've shown you. So it's not going to be a question of what electricity rates are going to do in year five, as to what point. It's going to be determined by those contract service payments, which is a given in the contract. The only factor then that needs to be applied is a discount factor, and this all gets into the heavy-duty accounting weeds, my apology there, but the discount factor is primarily dependent on the interest rates in five years. If interest rates go lower, the discount factor would force the fair market value higher. If interest rates go higher, the discount factor would force the fair market value to go lower. Interest rates in five years from now, when you'd be ready to buy your system out, drop to two and a half percent, around about two and a half percent, in order to push a million dollars of additional cost into fair market value, to take, you've shown in the contract, it's a six-point-nine million dollar fair market value, and push it a million, not to seven-point-nine, that would take interest rate, draw, have to drop down to two and a half percent to make that happen. If interest were around five percent, a little less than five percent, your fair market value wouldn't move from the six-point-nine, but they have to go down to two and a half percent in order to push a million dollars more of fair market value. So make sure that the board saw that analysis, market value is a reasonable, defined number.
Sharon, can you briefly give why it has to be fair market value, you can't set a dollar mark?
Right. Well, because actually, for, for the investors that are getting the tax credits, they are beholden to the IRS rules, whatever those IRS rules are, will be at that time. And if they take the tax credit and then do not get the fair market value, they are actually getting more than they're entitled to, and they would have to therefore give back some of the tax credit benefits that they received. We talked about, you know, at, at the time, we'll have to have a third party, independent third party, establish and, you know, put into writing what the fair market value is, and that will be something that will be sort of IRS-worthy, so that there is the, no risk involved. And, and I guess we had discussed the issue of, of, you know, language that might be a little more flexible, and it really seemed to be, and I can understand that, a problem, a risk problem, that didn't make it worthwhile if you're going to have to worry about giving back, you know, lots of investment money that you thought you had.
I, I think from my standpoint, it's, it's not necessarily the buyout cost that's, that's an issue. However, I do have to keep in mind that there could be an entirely different set of people here in, in the sixth year when the system would be purchased, and they may not purchase it. And the concern I have is for the contract service payments, and going the other route, where it would just be a yearly contract service payment, which looks like it increases one percent every year, regardless of what the current energy market is doing, and I think that's where I, I have some issues with, with risk. You know, and obviously, in addition to the SREC income that may change, or not be as high, or completely go away, they, we also have to take into account, you know, where the pricing's going to be, and I, I don't see any protections in here if the pricing doesn't go the way the, the analysis thinks it's going to go. Obviously, yeah, at year twenty-eight, we could break even, but seems like a waste of land for a break even at, at year twenty-eight. And I just, I, I think that's where I'm struggling here, is, is just that there's a guaranteed one percent year-over-year contract service payment increase, but there's nothing built in to help protect the school district from any swing in, in price, and, and, you know, I, we're, we're in a period right now where we're in high inflation. We also, and you, you hear everybody beating the drum about recession coming up within a year, and it just seems like it might not be the most opportune time tender in this type of agreement.
Yeah, I guess I want to be, you know, sensitive to the fact that it sounds like there's still quite a bit of, I won't say confusion, but, you know, we certainly don't have unanimity, you know, I think, you know, among us at this point, you know, in terms of where we see this going. And I'm trying to be sensitive to what Tim initially said, you know, which is that, and I, and I've said this before, I, I do think that there's a majority of the board here who are, have, who would like to see solar, you know, an investment in solar, but need to feel comfortable that we're not putting the district in any financial risk or any liability, considering that some of the volatility factors that Jason has talked about. So I don't know whether it's more prudent, to be quite honest, to, to vote on this proposal, and, you know, clearly a very split, I think, board, at least I think, or whether it would make more sense to, again, table, you know, the motion, and maybe consider what Tim had talked about, which is, you know, allowing a, a smaller group of folks who are invested in this to continue to dig deep into this, to, to consider options, perhaps work with a, maybe someone like an advisor or consultant who would have maybe a, take on more of a fiduciary role in assisting us and, and moving in that direction. So I don't know if there's any, any other thoughts on that.
Dr. Amber, I, you know, my understanding is that this vote today is for this current agreement. So if the agreement, you know, under the presumption that the agreement didn't pass, I don't see any reason why this takes solar off the table. I mean, we could still move forward with some kind of a subcommittee and move in the conversation for it, unless I'm not understanding that correctly. But this is for this specific contract, so, I mean, in my mind, if we tabled it, we'd just be tabling it to continue to kick the can on, on these agreements, as opposed to, I don't disagree with your, with your thought process, I just think that, you know, I'd rather see a subcommittee, and even, to be honest with you, a consulting company that, that is going to act on our behalf. I don't think that our current consulting company that we've worked with has really represented us in a way that has helped to, you know, make me feel like, you know, I was getting information, I felt like they were just a broker for us between Greenworks. And I'd really like to see someone that can come in that's smarter than I am and, and act on our behalf.
How about Mr. Rubeg? The one who sent the analysis that we asked Quandrell to respond to, and he didn't. I think that there's someone who's impartial. He submitted his analysis without, it's my understanding, without any invitation from us, so he'd be completely neutral, and he raised questions that I certainly wasn't aware of. So there's a thought.
So I think what you're saying, you know, Mr. Murray, is that the vote would be primarily on this, on this contract and the arrangements that are specific to this contract, but not necessarily discontinue any ongoing investigation of solar, whether it's through Greenworks or through another party.
Yeah, because if the con, if the agreement passes, I mean, then you're, you know, that concept is, is null and void, because we'll be moving forward. If the agreement doesn't go through, then we have an opportunity, I don't want to say to start at ground zero, because I don't think we are, I think that Greenworks has done a good job of, of laying down a foundation, but I just think that we're not, we're, at least for me, you know, for reasons stated, I'm not going to go through it again.
I just have a question for the administration. I know, Mr. Pike, you brought this to the table, primarily because you were really concerned about the budget in the next few years and the impact upon, you know, our electrical costs in the district and how our budget was going to spiral out of control. Are you still behind this project? And can I ask the superintendent and business manager to kind of give us your, your thoughts on this, if you don't mind?
Sure. Brian and I have talked about this at length, and I came into it a little bit, obviously a little bit later, but I do recall when Brian came on board, one of the things that he was charged with was to find opportunities to make sure that we had a balanced budget, and he's been working very diligently to do so. I don't think anyone could have predicted the economic downturn that we've had recently with the, the rise of inflation and the impact that it's had on households, as well as businesses, and of course, school districts are not immune to that. Tim talked about the importance of stabilization, looking at it from a stabilization part, part, and I believe that he's right in saying that. We're not going to, we're not, we're a school district, our product is students, we don't produce a revenue, so we have to look for other revenue opportunities, but that's very difficult in the line of work that we're in. So looking at a, a solar farm is a way for us to more stabilize costs opposed to actually bringing in a revenue source. If, if that would turn out to happen through this, then that would be an added bonus. But just in speaking to Brian today and, and looking at where we are preliminarily as far as costs and what could potentially have as, as revenue, quote-unquote, through taxes and, and other, other things, there is a concern. There is a concern on our part about the budget that we are going to be able to bring forward to the board, and, and so we're looking at that very closely.
So do you see this project as a way to control those costs?
I, I do see it as a way to more so stabilize, opposed to, if, if there is a, the right deal that the board feels comfortable with, that makes sense. And you have a, a very difficult, or I don't vote, but you have a very difficult task in, in front of you, to make sure that you are financially, be fiscally responsible and doing the best in the district.
Mr. Pike, do you have a, what, what?
Yeah, I've been working on this sort of out here, and if I said all along, this is not a green project, to me, this is a cost savings or a cost reduction. When you looked at the next item on there, we have electric rates, the lowest term we have is seven-point-three cents a kilowatt. Right now, our existing contract, which we signed back in two thousand and seventeen, for four years, was actually a decrease from the previous three years in two thousand and fifteen. The rates were five-point-six cents. We signed up a contract for four years that expires in May of two thousand and twenty-three, and our current rate is three-point-six-five. So the best we have on the table for next year is double. If we look at like three years, it actually goes up, but not much, but it's, I have to figure out where to come up with that, the savings. As Tim said, I'm looking for a long-term stabilization that we know is going here, it's not going to, you know, salaries, expenses, supplies, everything's just skyrocketing for somebody to catch up, and I'm not seeing it right now. So as I'm saying, I'm, I'm looking for cost savings or stabilization. To me, it's a savings, because that's what rates are going to be.
Well, I think too, as a bud, as a budget manager, I mean, you're somebody who would prefer to be able to predict from year to year what your costs are going to be.
Right.
And, and a system like this would essentially do that.
And, and like, when I said before, when I looked at this, there's areas that we can do it for a lot less cost, but it's going to take up hills, even here, the sunny field, playfield, which was costly, and that, that got shut down. I know Bob's worried about the, a watt, you know, if we can save half of it, we did the top half, and now he'd do the bottom, you know, I'd like to see something else to save, you know, instead of constantly increasing costs, because, well, I started here, we had a three-point-two million dollar budget deficit, cut it down to one-point-six. This past year, we cut it down to eight, you know, then we have thirty-two million in salaries, with three, minimum three percent raise to contractual plus usual, thirty-four to thirty-five percent, so there's another million, four million, five is to be added to the old nine-thousand, so I'm trying to get us down to, you know, revenue spending is the same, so we have to have to save expenses, cut expenses. We're in the business of these students, I'm not going to suggest cutting educational areas.
Let's not forget the three and a half million we just found out about last reading for the junior high.
And, you know, there's other things that, that's going to be going down the road, as I think Bob said, there's, you know, take care of your building. But see, those types of things, I, I would look at bond issues, finance, the government period. We could actually build our own farm, but this was a way, the PSA agreement said, there's no money out of our pocket. You know, it's a risk-down growth, you know, to me, it's the maximum we'd be paying is the same we're paying now for electric. We just know that it's straightforward, and we have a farm, but we have savings that actually brings some revenue back. You know, and when, truthfully, when they built the lot, I know Bob was on there, we put the solar panels on, ooh, you know, at that time, they put a hundred and seventy-five million panels, now they're up to five hundred. megawatt panels. Now they're up to five hundred. I think Bob's thinking, oh, we'll take up half the land. But for those five or six years till they have those triple layer, every pole, you know, we could be saving electricity costs during that time. And we're not using that money. So whether we take up some of that land, we keep or not keep, that's one of them. Back to the old analogy, do you still have a whole full phone or record? Do you have new? Yeah, I pass for whatever. They're going back to flips. I can't say that anymore.
Dr. Herring, I never got a chance to say stop the presses when I was in journalism, but maybe it's time to say call the question.
Roll call.
Can you do roll call first? This is to approve recommendation, to approve recommendation of this contract.
Dr. Andrea Battler?
No.
John Fiddler?
No.
Dr. Ann Herring?
Yes.
Dr. David Hember?
Yes.
Jason Mill?
No.
Robert Quinter? Timothy Morgan?
No.
Julia Schaefer?
Yes.
Allison Wilson?
Yes.
Four yes, five no. Motion fails.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. Ms. Kamel?
Okay, moving on to item B, electric purchase agreement. It is recommended that the Board of Directors approves the business administrator after consultation with the Chair of the Finance Committee to take all steps necessary to lock and secure electric rates to be applied for the 2023, 2024 fiscal year that are most advantageous to the district. And I believe, Mr. Feig, you have gotten pricing back from Tradition.
Do I need a second on that?
Suck you.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Mr. Feig, you have gotten quotes from two energy suppliers, Tradition Energy and IGS Electricity?
Yes, I actually, the broker Tradition has, I think, four or five different suppliers and then a direct from ING. ING was the lowest now. The reason the motion is is worded this way is because that was the price that we were locked in on Friday when I sent out. Tomorrow could be a different price. So that's why the motion is that, you know, after consulting with Jason, we decide which one. I think the more important thing is the direction. I had three, we were, they asked for three, six, or no, six, nine months, a year and two years. And, you know, what timeframe would the board want us to lock in?
Yeah, so the, um, just, just looking over the the pricing info here, it looks like the the cheapest amount that could be locked in is if we get a an agreement until December 2024.
Right. It's surprising to see that both and all of them priced went up again if you locked in for 2025 and stuff.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
So I think they have released their projecting something for it, you know.
Yeah. So it was, we could essentially do seven, seven point seven cents per kilowatt hour if we had the agreement go from June of 2023 till July of 2024, which would, you know, be the year. Or if we wanted to go a year and a half, we could pay seven point two cents per kilowatt hour. I think the recommendation, when we discussed it, Mr. Feig, was going to an annual price for the seven point seven, not going any further in terms of the the timeframe that we're considering locking in.
Yeah, I, my suggestion is we we look at our budget year, which ends July of twenty, or June, July, 2024. So.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll look, we'll look at the following year's budget to see what we want to do for 24, 25.
Okay.
So, but we already know that if we go to 25, it goes up, correct? Let's think. So twenty four months, we go up to seven point, what'd you say it was?
Well, as of Friday, seven point three, or seventy seven, yeah.
Seven point seven is if you go until July 2024, it's seven point two. If you go to December 2024, and then seven point three going out to June of 2025.
So the recommendation is to do the eighteen months, is that correct?
I I think that Mr. Feig was saying.
Or it's actually from June of 23 forwards, not from today, it's June 23. So I I would go from June of 23 to June or July of 24. Is it a rate of what?
Seven point seven cents per kilowatt.
We can do it shorter, but it's, if you want, you want nine months, it's eighty, eighty point four cents.
If you went to, so so explain to me why you wouldn't do seven point two and have it end in December, and then if we don't have an agreement for solar by then, re-lock at that time?
Well, the price, I mean, it's it's up to speculation if you think the prices are going to go down. Do you want to lock in at the higher rate and expect the prices to go down and lock in again at a lower rate?
No, I think what he's saying is go through December 24, at seven point two cents. It's split year.
Right, yeah. But the question was, why would we, why would we not go for the lower rate? I'm just saying it, the rate could be lower by July of 2024. Yeah, when we had to redo it again. So that that's the gamble.
And what's point five kilowatt hours worth in savings over a year? Mr. Feig?
Electric toothbrush?
Is there any other, uh, question? Fifty thousand?
Okay.
So I guess my my question is, I'm a lot more comfortable taking a six-month risk than a forty-year risk tonight, you know, knowing the information that we now.
Yes, we're not.
Right, you know, I, this is, this is just six months. We're going to save fifty thousand dollars over the long run as opposed to if we rolled the dice with seven point seven and hope that we can make that fifty grand Mac in the next, in the next year.
That's the game.
Right. But all indications, based on the 2025, but of the 2025, they're calling it at seven point five. So it could wind up higher than that.
Wind up higher, could wind up lower. I don't know. I mean, ultimately, what, Mr. Feig, it's whatever is the best for budget purposes, whatever works.
I like to go into budget, know what it's going to be. It doesn't matter if it's a happier or a fuller year for me, you know, that's. But it could be a big surprise. At the same point, though, is I'd like to turn out fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Which, that's fifty thousand dollars, but.
But it could be a lot more the second half of the year.
Correct.
Lose that fifty thousand.
Correct.
You know, what happens is like right now, if we're negotiating next year's pricing, so next year's budget is the same time, we need to start to look at what the pricing will be. And I'm sure the sales revenue will be coming up, rates go down, say, hey, lock it down. It's written down. Or they're going to, at the same point, call up saying, you should lock it down. It's rates going up.
Yeah, I mean, most of the.
So you just have to watch it.
Most, most of the the analysis that's been out there in the news has definitely said 2023 is going to remain high for a percent price. 2024 is speculative. That's the thing. I mean, I mean, any, anything is going to the future, but you just don't know what could change.
And in this company, it's a lot lower than the others that we've heard.
Yeah.
They're liable, but who knows how they keep the market prices.
So the motion on the table is just to give Mr. Feig the authority to consult with the Chair and take the steps needed to to lock in the rate.
Second up? Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Yeah, item C, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors authorize district participation in CAFCO collaborative procurement effort through the Lancaster Lebanon Intermediate Unit 13 for the fiscal year 23, 24.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Item D, for the consent agenda, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following finance facilities and audit items, items one and items two.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Dr. Herring, that is it for my committee report.
Thank you.
Dr. Herring?
Yes.
There were some comments made during the discussion of the Greenworks proposal. I think that we should recognize the effort and the time and the cooperation that Greenworks has put into it. And if there are any further discussions at the, at Mr. Mill's level on what to do, I think Greenworks should be included in that program. Just my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinter. I was actually going to ask, what, what are our next steps? What are we going to do now? Shall we keep the ball rolling?
I suggest we have a subcommittee. I mean, I think that part of the problem is, is that we get this information every two weeks and hopefully a subcommittee could could help and assist with, you know, a little bit more of the filtration of that information and, you know, not to miss, you know, the mistakes that we saw today from the contract. And we would have had more of an opportunity to be informed about that. That's just.
Did you just volunteer to remember? That was so nice of you.
I did not.
Had it, had it. I mean, it was forward with the.
I'd like to participate on my committee, but I don't.
Good. Do, can we, should we save this for the end of the agenda? Or is it okay to talk about this now?
You're still under the committee report. And I would suggest that you don't have to make it a subcommittee necessarily, but it can, you can just schedule your finance committee. Especially around that, and remember participates.
Can I, just a question about the function of the subcommittee like this. I'm going to have to assume that it would require some kind of public notice for the, this committee to meet?
You're, yes, that you, your committee meetings are noticed.
Okay, so they would be open to the public?
Yes.
And it might not necessarily include the whole board if they didn't want to be there, but there would be at least designated board members who would participate?
Correct.
With other folks, maybe who would be from the community or other consultants who might be available to consult with the committee?
The finance committee chair can certainly like to have guests to do whatever tasks that the committee wants.
Yes, it's, so just on the conversation, I think what was extremely lacking in this effort over the past few months was having an advocate or a type of advisor that worked for the district. That's, that's ultimately the issue. I, we had board members each coming up with our own solar panel information from sources on the internet. It was not, it was not a well-organized effort. And I think we need to have somebody vested in either consultancy or somebody that would be an advocate for the district that could lead some of that charge and make sure that we're getting the best deal possible.
I think that you could, one, one of the first tasks that the committee could give itself would be to vet some qualified consultants. I think you want to make sure that your consultants have qualifications and experience that are looking forward to, in order to advise you properly.
Sure.
Isn't that what Quandell's for?
Yes, and I think the the question was, we weren't getting the level of consultant work. No offense to Quandell, I don't, I don't think they were, they weren't charging for for any of the questions that we were asking through them. But I think ultimately, we want somebody that is going to advise us in terms of the pricing and be able to tell us and actually look over the contract as well.
Yeah, I, I mean, I looked on the internet and found a couple of organizations that they do that specifically. Quandell doesn't really, that is not their main focus, but there are other organizations that this is what they do. Because they really recognize that these are difficult decisions, that particularly nonprofits that kind of venture into this territory, they don't have the expertise to, as you talked about, we, you guys have done a great job and other board members have done an excellent job of really kind of analyzing this on your own. But, you know, to have someone who is in our court, you know, is looking after us in a fiduciary capacity, I think makes an awful lot of sense. I totally agree with that suggestion, Jason. I think it's a smart way to go. And then we would have, I think, more confidence in recommendations when they do. Because I, as much as I, I think we appreciate and Mr. Quinter, I think, emphasized this, you know, we recognize the integrity of Greenworks, they are selling a product. And so they definitely have a vested interest in profit and a profit. And we want somebody whose vested interest is the district's best interest.
Which is why I suggested, Mr. Brubaker, he certainly had the district's interests at heart in his long email to us.
I, I may be, he may be someone that we.
So we, we could look at a number of options.
Right, thank you. Policy committee, that can help her.
Okay. So it's recommended the Board of School Directors approve the following policies. Two policies for first reading are policy two oh one, admission of students, and policy eight oh eight, food services. And then second reading, policy controlled substances paraphernalia. So it's recommended that we approve these three policies, two for first reading and policy two twenty seven for second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to comment on the admission of students policy. I, I did reach out to Mrs. Harris today and there's a section of that policy that talks about early admission of school. And most of the policies that I'm familiar with are maybe a little bit more specific or more clear in terms of advising parents whether or not there is an actual early admission process and and they, and and an opportunity for parents to request early admission for those students who they believe may be appropriate for school, whether it's kindergarten or first grade, and are, have not met the age requirements. And this early mission testing is typically done by psychologists and there's a, there are criteria and there's a process that you go through. So I spoke to Mrs. Harris about that. Dawn, do you want to talk about that at all in terms of, you know, what maybe we could do to enhance that policy a little bit, just to kind of make that a little bit more clear?
Sure thing. I agree with you. That first paragraph under the early admissions section, I think we can add a few more sentences in there to further clarify for families that the district is open to early admissions testing, that we do have a process, and how they can access that process if they are interested. So I think we can do that and then bring it back for the next committee of the hall.
And I think if we make substantial changes to a policy, this is Montana, I think we have to kind of bring it back as a first reading, if I'm not mistaken, unless it's just basic edits.
You can bring substantive changes to a second reading.
Oh, you can?
Yeah.
All right, well then, I'm, I'm recommending then that we move forward and approve the admission of students with the understanding it's just a first reading and then we'll be making edits. And the board will be informed of that prior to the next, well, we'll talk about it in the committee.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
That's all for my report.
Thank you, Dr. Hemberger. Athletics and extracurricular activities, Mrs. Wilson.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the cooperative sponsorship with Uli Valley School District Boys and Girls Swimming and Dive. with Holy Valley School District Boys and Girls Swimming and Diving for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the recommendations for changes in technology and positions for current coaching positions in the CPA.
Do you mean to say terminology?
Terminology versus technology.
Term, yes, terminology, not technology.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I do have a, a few more announcements as well. Um, I would like, um, to promote that the senior high is having their fall play starting Thursday, October twenty-seventh, um, Get Smart at the High School. And the junior high school will be presenting the musical Into the Woods Junior on November eleventh and twelve. We had eight students audition and get selected for the senior high county chorus this year. Um, I also have some athletic, um, updates. We have had two individual golfers that qualified for the district three tournament last week in New York, PA. Congratulations to Kyle Steck and Andrew Bauer for qualifying for the district three tournament. Our high school boys and girls cross-country teams both finished the regular season with fifteen and oh records, and they will both compete in the BCI double A cross-country county, cross-country championships at Quitztown University on Tuesday, October eighteenth. The high school girls volleyball team has qualified for the BCI double A and district three tournaments. The BCI double A tournament starts on Thursday, October twentieth. The boys and girls water polo teams are looking to qualify for Eastern Conference playoffs, and earlier this season, girls water polo senior Megan Unruh scored her four-hundredth career goal. Congratulations to Megan. The varsity football team is currently eight and oh and ranked second in district three five A. Senior night for football cheerleading and band is on Friday, October twenty-first, starting at six twenty-five in the stadium. Um, every season, we have sports, um, outside. We try to get the junior high teens outside to play on the stadium turf, and that's coming up, uh, this week. Um, today, the junior high field hockey team played at four o'clock against Reading. The boys and girls soccer team are playing against Governor Mifflin tomorrow at five o'clock. The freshman football team is playing Wednesday, October nineteenth, against Governor Mifflin at seven PM, and the junior high football team is playing on Thursday, October twenty-seventh at six thirty PM in the stadium. Winter and spring sports physicals will be held on Wednesday, November second, at Commonwealth Orthopedics, and the parents', um, grades seven through twelve should have received a parent's square about this notification. High school winter sport, sports start on Friday, November eighteenth, and junior high winter sports start on Tuesday, November twenty-ninth. Mr. Brown would also like me to share from the junior high that the junior high girls volleyball team finished their season undefeated, and that this is the second season in a row that the team has gone undefeated. And also, the junior high boys cross-country team finished their season undefeated. In addition, on Saturday, over one hundred and seventy-five Exeter cheerleaders from kindergarten through twelfth grade participated in the sideline showdown at the Reading fairgrounds. Exeter brought home numerous awards. Um, thank you, Mr. Brown, for coming out to support the junior high girls, and for Dr. Hallard to enjoy the day at the fairgrounds as well. Um, if you have never been to a cheerleading competition before, you're in luck, because Exeter is hosting a cheer competition on Sunday, November twentieth. So you're a big chance. Uh, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Um, Dr. Battler, Exeter Community Education Foundation.
Thank you. The ECEF welcomed our newest board member Rory Bender to the board on October fourth. Rory is a familiar face to Exeter as he's a two thousand graduate, in addition to being an Exeter resident and parent. For the past two years, Rory has been an active volunteer with our golf tournament. We're excited to have Rory as an ECEF board member. We know he'll be an asset for ECEF as well as Exeter. Thank you.
Thank you. BCTC Joint Operating Committee, Mr. Fiddler?
The JOC's next meeting is Wednesday of next week.
Thank you. Dr. Hemberger, can you cover BCIU Board of Directors and Legislative Liaison?
Thanks, Dr. Herring. Um, next BCIU board meeting is this Thursday, October twentieth at seven PM. Uh, in terms of legislative report, I just wanted to make a few comments about the wrap-up to the, um, twenty-one, twenty-two legislative session, uh, in Harrisburg. It ends November thirtieth, uh, where thousands of bills that didn't make it into law will now expire. Uh, so any bill that was introduced in the previous legislative session, uh, have to be reintroduced and start all over again in the, in the next session. Uh, so each session coincides with this two-year election cycle that we have. We're going into this two, two-year election cycle, uh, with the general election in November. In Harrisburg, all two hundred and three seats for state senate are up for reelection. Uh, and half of the state senate, um, seats, the twenty-five state senators, uh, in even-numbered districts are up for reelection, uh, are, are up for election. Judy Schwank, who is our state senator, is in an odd-numbered district, eleventh, so, uh, she'll be running for reelection in two years. Um, we'll also be getting a new governor, uh, and the governor and his administration will want to set their own legislative priorities. So we can expect to get some encouragement from PSBA about reaching out to our legislators in the new session, uh, especially any newly-elected legislators that come into, um, in, in the play and, and reacquaint them with our, uh, legislative priorities, in, including charter school, uh, funding reform and other, uh, school funding issues. Uh, and just finally a reminder, I don't, I'm sure I don't have to remind everybody here, but the general election is November eighth, uh, Tuesday, so I would encourage, uh, all voters to consider each candidate's position on public education when they, when they go to the polls. That's all for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Township and borough liaison, Mr. Mel?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, next we go to public comment. No one signed up. Is there anyone that would like to be heard, though? No? Anyone on the board that would like to be heard at this moment? No? Okay. Next board meeting will be our committee of a whole on Wednesday, November second at six o'clock.